That seem to have not stuck with you. This building is open from eight to five, Monday through Friday. We have daily hearings and frequent jury trials. Almost all hearings held in this building are open to the public unless there's sequestered, which is not very common. Anybody is allowed into this facility as long as they bring no weapons or a cellphone, as Mr. Taber stated this morning. Your other statement was that you hadn't heard about the equal access to justice until the Artesia meeting. That leads me to believe you truly aren't listening to our community and the people this affects the most, but that's okay. I'll refresh your memory. The head public defender Nate Banks spoke during the Carlsbad meeting. He stated that his clients barely make it to the current courthouse, let alone moving it to south of town. He mentioned many of his clients don't have cars or transportation resources to commute to South Carlsbad for hearings or trials. Our district court judges have said this would be an impact to equal access to justice. Mr. Henry, you've heard this, the other commissioners have heard this, but today you still made it known you weren't paying attention to the people that were speaking, and that raises concern to me as a citizen of the county. I hope this email answers some of your questions or concerns, and if you have more, I'd be happy to answer them. I also humbly ask that you not treat this community as a bunch of young children that don't understand what the adults are doing. Give us some credit, listen to us, and vote on behalf of us as community. Thank you for your time, Brady Bray. With that, I'll open it up to any public comment that we have in the audience.
Good morning, Commissioners. Norbert Rancor, U.S. citizen and Eddy County resident. A decade ago, Carlsbad became the first New Mexico community to join the Age Friendly Citizens and Communities Network. While this designation focuses on the convenience and security of seniors, how can we achieve these goals at the expense or exclusion of people of any other age? Since we know for certain biological fact that the existence of each of us did not start with birth, but at conception, extending friendship to people of all ages must necessarily include our prenatal children. Carlsbad's Age Friendly Action Plan talks about treating all residents and visitors with respect regardless of age or physical ability, about making this region a place called home for all ages, about a sense of belonging to the community for residents of all ages. We should live up to these noble aspirations for Eddy County residents and visitors regardless how old or how young. If we're serious about practicing what we profess in our invocations and Sunday speeches, we must therefore follow the good example of our eastern neighbors who have made murder in the womb practically impossible by enacting binding ordinances. Our state government has rolled out the welcome mat for the slaughter of preborn children, commercially, industrially, as well as individually by human pesticide in residential bathrooms. Silence and inaction in the face of such evil amount to appeasement and complicity. We cannot straddle the fence on this life or death issue without ruining our credibility and compromising every other value we supposedly stand for. Do what is right and necessary now. Let us be at least as inviting and welcoming to our youngest as we are to our oldest.
Any more public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our service awards. Chairman Bowen, you want to... Our first service award, I don't believe she's present, Sandy Tegwell Motor Vehicle Department, five years. Next, we have Larry Lopez, Facilities, five years. All right, three, two, one. Next, we have Clayton Ballard Detention Center, ten years. And Michael Molina Detention Center, twenty years. All right, thank you. Can we just take a short break real quick to take a picture out of that? Next, we'll move into our IFB RP bid awards. We have RFP twenty-four oh three, On Call Plumbing Maintenance and Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman. I'm coming to you with RFP twenty-four oh three. We went, it was solicited on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. We received only one submission, Rhodes Co., Rhodes Company, out of Roswell. The bid was deemed responsive, meeting all mandatory specifications. Based on this, the staff and evaluators are recommending an award to be made to Rhodes Co.
I have a question. If they're out of Roswell and we have an emergency, what happens?
Well, there's not anybody local who put out for it, so I, this was the only... We did a re, we even re-advertised locally twice to get responders, or responses.
But do we have a backup plan?
Trent.
I mean, that's a big concern to me.
We can use, in emergent situations, we can contact local.
Just in an emergency, they're out of Roswell. Do we have somebody local, or do we have an office locally?
I don't know. I don't know that.
Don't you think we ought to have one? People are going to have that. I mean, CAF says we can contact.
Yeah, if it's an absolute emergency and we can't wait for them to get an hour over here, we're going to take the steps necessary to get a plumber out there and take care of it.
And we can do that legally.
Yeah.
Yeah, for procurement code for emergency purposes, you can.
Emergency purposes.
We want, we want to make sure that we keep that in mind.
Better have a list of them. Because I know they're all busy. That's the problem.
We reached out to quite, to quite a few locals, first service at detention and a few other places that we see emergency calls. I wouldn't say regularly, but annually, so a couple times annually.
I just concerned, you know, when you're talking plumbing, sometimes you're talking a lot.
An hour to wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just an hour drive time. That's not, that's if they're sitting there waiting.
That's if, that's if they leave right away. They're not on some other call, but they've got it.
In emergencies, you don't necessarily have to use it. Yeah, they're on call, but if it's an emergency, we have the ability under procurement code to go ahead and get those services right here.
Okay, well, I mean, that just popped in my mind as soon as you said Roswell. Damn, that's a long way away. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Concerns? Look for a motion to approve RFP twenty-four dash oh three for On Call Plumbing and Maintenance Services.
I'll make that motion in a second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving into the trailing agenda, we have our commission meeting minutes for May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Is there anything that we need to pull for further discussion or any other questions? For a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for May seventh, twenty twenty-four?
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next, we have our purchase card approval report for April, twenty twenty-four.
Questions, concerns? Look for a motion to approve the purchase card approval report for April, twenty twenty-four.
I'm moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Next, we have our treasures report for April, twenty twenty-four. This has been distributed prior to the meeting, so unless there's any questions, this is just for informational purposes only. Next, we have consideration and approval for HF Sinclair Navajo Refining to install community monitors on county property in Artesia.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chairman.
Next, we have Resolution R twenty-four fifty-three, so Resolution Supporting Water Reuse. Uh, so Missy Courier and Namoga had reached out asking the county if, um, we would support water reuse and, um, do a resolution in support of that. Missy wanted to be here to speak on Namoga's behalf, but she was unable to. She sent me a little bit of information. This resolution initially started out, um, supporting the proposed, um, N-mac rule twenty point six eight, um, which is ground and surface water protection supplement requirements. However, since its inception, that rule has evolved and changed. So at the beginning of it, that rule was supported specifically by Namoga. And that's what was specifically asked of us in the resolution was to actually support that adoption of the rule passing of twenty-six eight. However, since, um, language in that rule has been changed, um, we are essentially, it doesn't support water reuse in the way that it was intended to. So the resolution is just a general support of water reuse, um, because it's kind of changed from the resolution of supporting an actual N-mac rule to just a general resolution. A letter of support would also suffice if you guys choose to do a letter of support rather than a resolution. Uh, but that's what this specific resolution is gonna be for, is just a general water reuse. Uh, just to give you a little bit more information, the legislator did pass in twenty nineteen the Produced Water Act that created jurisdictional legal clarity over produced water. Uh, the Produced Water Act was a bipartisan bill. The passed bill requires that the Quality Control Commission and New Mexico Environment Department create rules and standards for the water reuse. Um, of course, treated produced water would allow for irrigation on non-conceivable crops like cotton landscaping applications and roadway maintenance. Many counties and municipalities already use some level of water reuse. If appropriate rules are passed, this would increase water reuse potential. For every gallon of produced water used, a gallon of fresh water is conserved. While water reuse should be supported, the rule currently being considered by the water con- water quality control commission should not be supported. It does not allow for discharge or set water quality standards. The rulemaking will occur in multiple phases. It did start May thirteenth through the seventeenth of May. And it will reconvene on July first. Uh, so just in general, this resolution does show support for water reuse within a county that has a high potential of benefiting from this rule for generations to come. So I will stand for any questions at this point. And like I said, it is being, um, um, brought to you as a resolution, but if you guys choose to do so, um, do a letter of support rather than a resolution, uh, Missy and Namoga would be very, uh, grateful for that as well.
So, Amoga would be in favor of this letter of support?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I like the idea of the letter better than the resolution.
Uh, way, way better.
First, yeah.
Have we heard from the independents?
That's...
No, not that I know of.
You know, why would we not support reusing produced water if it's feasible?
There have been other entities that have already passed resolutions and provided resolutions of support. I know Carlsbad, Hobbs, um, I believe Eunice has passed. Um, and there were some others that were in the process, just like we were passing similar resolutions or letters of support.
You know, I like the clause that Fred just, just, uh, said, if it's economically feasible. I wonder if we could add something like that to our letter of support. We support economically feasible reuse of produced water or something like that, rather than to just give a blanket approval, you know, because some of the stuff that, that they come up with, uh, it's not economically feasible and it harms our oil and gas friends. And I would say, let's put a clause in there that states that if it's economically feasible to reuse, to get water, then, then we support that.
This would allow for produced water to be used on crops, cotton, things like that, so it's actually...
How about roads? They used to. Put it on roads to hold the roads together, the salt help the moisture. Just like, you know, that salt, it's, they use in the mountains when it snows.
Yeah, I've heard that works really well.
Yeah.
It actually adds oil in it too, to kinda sometimes bound the surface together a little bit.
Yeah.
A letter.
So, I, I would, I would move that we approve with, with that change, you know, economically feasible.
I'd like to see a motion to approve a letter with those changes, not the resolution.
Yeah, and I, and I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay. The motion is second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have report outlining the expenditures for intermittent of cremation of qualified unclaimed descendants or indigent persons over proceeding twenty months. Ms. Veronica?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. So, um, attached was the report of, um, indigent cremations, uh, county has taken care of within the past twenty months. Uh, this report was just now, or here recently, uh, done. Um, we've been tr- I've been trying, or I have tried to get with the indigent healthcare uh, solutions computer program that I use to create these reports, um. It's very helpful. Uh, it did create a report. There's more information on there than what I would like to be out publicly, just because there's themes and stuff. But, um, I came up with this, so I hope this is helpful. Uh, there has been, since this was approved, there's been a lot of, or sudden changes to the county, so I apologize if I'm just now getting this to you all. Um, those changes just, to me, still aren't, there's no solution that I've heard of, but anyway, that's out the window. But here's the report. If you have any questions, you can go ahead and try and, uh, for any questions, if you can.
So Commissioners, if you remember back in September twenty twenty-two, there was a resolution passed to streamline this process so that she didn't have to bring each one of these back every time. And there was gonna be protocol to bring a report back every so often, every six months. Like Veronica said, because there was a change of administration, county manager, community services director, um, that would kind of fell off and that report was never brought. So we're essentially bringing the report back since the beginning of this inception and moving forward, it'll be brought every six months for your guys' consideration.
Fifteen years, twenty years ago, they bring the people's name, what they had in the way of money.
Right.
What they di- I mean, it was just crazy what, what, what used to be presented to a commission, and we stopped doing that. And of course, she wants to keep everybody's names confidential. Give the information because she takes care, she evaluates every one of these and doesn't pay them unless they're, meet the requirements.
And although they are public, they are public record, I wouldn't like for it to come back to the county for, you know, why was this name put out? But that's, that's my personal opinion on, on that, that particular information, on those reports.
I agree with that.
She keeps track of all where, their cremations, they're, she keeps track of it for several, for years.
Yes.
Where they're buried, if somebody, if some family member comes and says, I'd like to, you know, whatever the person's name.
And not...
She knows right where they are and...
Just last week, I had, um, a family member from East Coast. Do you know so-and-so, what happened, where they at? And I was able to give them that information, so they're very grateful.
She's very good at what she does. She monitors it well.
That's great. That's what it's been helpful. Yeah, I'm coming. This is before my turn.
I agree.
So coming forward, or going forward, I'd be back in November.
And this is just informational, so it doesn't require a, a motion to approve.
Okay, alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval to apply for Corrections Recruitment Fund being offered through the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. Gordon?
Good morning, Chief. How are we doing? So, uh, we were approached last week, uh, to sort a timeline of about thirty days. The state had allocated about twenty-five million dollars for, uh, the counties to apply uh, for, uh, some of those funds for new, new individuals that may be coming in. It could be for, it, it, it's kind of weird. It's a state-funded, um, balance, but it's also covering state agencies, so. But additionally with that, it also has, uh, some of the counties, uh, can apply for it. Uh, just some quick notes. It's for certified and uncertified. Um, they're not exactly for sure. It'll happen, happen after July, so let's say they, they allocate the fund in September, you can go retro back to July for those individuals that you may have hired. Um, it's a flat base amount. They don't, they don't know what it's gonna be, so, uh, and I don't know there would be the same amount for every agency. So, I think what they're really trying to do is see who's actually gonna apply for it, and they're gonna try to do the dispersment from that. They, they have it scheduled for three years, but they caution that same, depending on how well it's been or not spent, uh, it may just be a one year. And then, second year, go down to fifty percent, twenty-five percent at the third year, if the fund is still there. Clearly, if the funds are not used, it'll retro back and go back into the pool. Uh, you don't get to keep it, it'll go back into the, to the general fund. Uh, we would need a, I think it's, uh, resolution with, by the commissions granting the, uh, the agreement, which we can do that afterwards, once we figure out if, uh, if we'll be eligible for it. Uh, we'll have to do quarterly reports, going to let them know where the funds are going to. Um, again, there were retro, uh, and again, it'd be one year. And, um, I don't know, it's an opportunity to maybe to get some funding there that, uh, that we can use from, from the state.
And this funding is similar to the law enforcement recruitment, and then fire has similar funding as well too, that's also gonna be paid.
This is something that New Mexico counties has pushed, and we fought hard to get this retention and for fire, uh, to match the law enforcement one. So this is, this is a, a, a big deal, and so this is a chance for our folks to put a little extra money in that contest.
Questions?
I think it's a great idea.
For the motion to approve, uh, Corrections Recruitment Fund.
Correction Recruitment Fund.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Next, we have budget adjustment for Eddie County Capital Projects. Mr. Burden?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we're bringing this back to you again. We pulled it from a previous budget, uh, due to previous direction, but with the approval of moving forward with the detention center and the admin building, um, at what we've essentially called the complex down south of town, we'd like to go ahead and start the civil design for that process, or for that project. Um, essentially what this will be, will be all the utilities and surveying and, um, layout for what's gonna, for all the facilities that are gonna go on the complex. So this will be the first step in the process.
It's exciting.
Exciting.
I have no questions.
Questions? For motion to approve the budget adjustment for Eddie County Capital Projects for the civil site utilities design?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And we have our Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda.
Anything that we need to pull for further discussion?
Perhaps one.
And I'll look for a motion to approve the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
We do not have any tribal request consent agenda, no emergency business. I don't have anything legislative comments, Sheriff, unless you just have anything.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next, we'll move into elected official department comments and announcements.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, so with some of the comments that have been recently received from the county regarding several of the things we're doing, what I've, what we've put together is, um, the road department progress report. I think I handed that out before the meeting. Um, and I'll just quickly go over it, and we'll stand for any questions, but it's, it's important to show that the plan that we put in place five years ago is still working, and it's still in place, and it's still moving forward. Um, as you can see, we've put this together since the fiscal year nineteen twenty. Since then, um, we've expended a hundred and thirty-three million dollars in roads. And that's just dollars to dirt in road construction. That includes all of our maintenance projects, that includes all of our capital projects, that includes our bridges, that includes our cattle guards, signs, anything that is a tangible asset on the roads. You looked at me and gave a question. Um, with that, we broke down how many miles we've completed every year between projects and blades. Now, understand the project is our capital projects and our maintenance projects. Um, to date, we've got eight hundred and forty-four miles of project miles. What we've done is we've put that together in a pretty extensive and comprehensive spreadsheet that includes all of our seventeen hundred-plus sectioned miles of road. Um, and we've accounted for every time that we've gone and maintained a road, worked on a road, improved a road, and then came back and, you know, sealed it or done whatever, because that needs to count. Every time we go touch a section of road, we need to ensure we count that, and it's accounted for. Um, on top of that, we've included our blade miles, because on top of going out and doing maintenance and projects, we still go out and blade roads during the winter. And there's a lot of miles to cover, and we do those just like we do our maintenance projects. They're prioritized based off usage and, um, and we get around to the request and, and what we need to do. With that, under that, if you look at it, when we first started this, the first thing we did was an assessment of our roads. We got to where, you know, I think we came in and said, which ones are the worst, which ones are used the most? Um, with that, we developed our PQI system, which is our pavement quality index. When we started this in twenty nineteen, I came and presented that our overall PQI was a thirty-one point five. And we br- and we'd classified all our roads from arterial collector and local. In two thousand nineteen, we were at thirty-one point five. I reported again in twenty twenty-two, and we'd increased that to a forty-two point nine. You can see today, we're at a sixty-one point oh nine. It is still going up. We're getting to that number where we need to be between the sixty and seventy rating, including all of our locals. And the big number that jumped from twenty twenty-two to now is your local roads. We're getting around to our subdivisions. We're getting around to our smaller roads that aren't used as much. But that's where we are. We prioritized our arterial roads, our collector roads. We've got those to a condition that they're stable and we got a handle on, and now we're starting to concentrate on our subdivisions, our local roads. It's affecting our overall score, and that's what we want to see, is that we're still improving. Um, on top of that, with, I think, the first year we put in our concern tracker, it's still being used today. We still have our online reporting system. We still take phone calls. We still take calls and concerns through the county manager's office, and we track all of those, and the concerns that come in, who reports on, when they're reported, and then we track when we get out there, get them completed, and what we did to resolve the solution. So we're still tracking that, and you can see right there on a yearly basis, um, how many concerns and complaints that we have essentially addressed through our tracking system. Um, the tracker system is on a January to December basis, so it does not go on our fiscal year. So, we bring this to you to say, our roads are still a priority. We're still moving forward on, and, and we're going to continue to as long as that's the direction from the commission, so. Don't stand for any questions here, but in progress of...
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Can you remind me one more time, how many paved miles do we have?
We have right now on our certified mileage, twelve hundred and thirty, plus or minus, I think the exact number's twelve hundred and twenty-four miles. Eight hundred and thirty-four of that is paved, and, um, the remainder is unpaved.
Thank you. I'll just jump in there as well, and say this is great. I appreciate this report. It's very helpful.
So we bring you the road one today. It's the intention of bringing one for the landfill at a, another meeting, probably the next meeting. Because we, it's also important to understand the landfill's not our redheaded stepchild that's out there now to sight out of mind. So we deal with a lot of, and that's a key part to our operation. We're gonna bring you a report on how much of that we handle and what's going on at that landfill too.
This is excellent.
Sure.
Very good. I like those numbers.
They're impressive. I mean, it's not just me. You gotta give credit to our crews that go out and do the work. They're the ones that actually go out, operate the equipment. I just pay the bills, so those guys getting the credit and doing what they do is, works at it.
My, my look was just the, the jump from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. Three and a half million a thing.
First year was an assessment year. That's when we essentially put the plan together and came and said, here's what we want. Here's what we're gonna need to get there, and then that next fiscal year is when we put it in place and put it in motion. We put together a plan, executed it, and it's still working, so.
Well, don't, don't shortchange yourself. You have a big, you have a big party. Party's happening to our residents during your tenure here.
The, the mileage underneath that correlates with the money spent, so that's great.
Anybody else?
I would like to thank Jason and Trent for assisting me on trying to implement the ballot box situation, ballot drop box situation. Jason, um, had arranged for concrete to be poured. Unfortunately, we've had to pay for it out of our budget. We are running into some snags with the vendor in the state. That's all I'll say about that. We, I don't see us having them before the primary, but, um, also, I just wanna remind everybody that the early voting extended hours have begun. So the next two weeks, Monday through Friday, eight to six P M. in both Carlsbad and Artesia, and also the next two Saturdays, eight to four. Uh, voting will be closed on the twenty-seventh, Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I voted yesterday in Artesia, is my customer. I think there was four hundred and three that had already voted in Artesia. We, we go up and down. I mean, obviously, I get to come in here and say, oh, we're, we're fully staffed, and then, oh, no, we lost one or two for this reason or that reason. So we go up and down, so we don't rest on our laurels. Um, we, we have, I, I would encourage you, if you have social media, which is, uh, elected officials probably do, um, check out on our sheriff's office page our new recruiting videos that we, recruiting and, and basically PR videos. I, we had some professional ones done, and I'm really, really happy with them, how they came out. Uh, I think they, they, they showed Eddie County and Eddie County Sheriff's Office in a really positive light. Um, with that being said, we have, uh, Friday, we have three cadets, which I think is the most we've ever had, most I can remember ever having, graduating from the academy in Hobbs, which is a, a really cool deal. It's always fun to, to go to Hobbs and watch these young folks, uh, start their careers out. And, uh, well, they've already started, but I mean, to, to, that's, that's the real beginning, once there's a, so. Um, they'll be hitting the street, and, uh, we'll get them through field training and, and out on their own as quickly as possible. Uh, I was, I've alluded to it several times before, but I, I traveled to DC uh, for the National Law Enforcement Memorial, and, uh, I got to stand up on the stage and look out across, it was amazing, looking out across our national mall, uh, with the, the Washington Monument in the background, and they said there was over four thousand people there. Uh, so that was truly amazing to look out and see that kind of support, uh, for law enforcement. I was just humbled by it. And I was, uh, I read, uh, some of the names that I read were, uh, officers from Kentucky. I'm, I'm not sure why I didn't get New Mexico names, but, uh, that, it was fine because it was my, it was my honor to do it anyway, and, and, uh, it was really cool. I, I've always been encouraged to go to that. I, I just never have because it, I, I, I tried to do all the local stuff. But, uh, this time, being on the stage was absolutely amazing to see all those people. And I was up there on the stage with folks like the, the new Chicago Police Chief, um, who was an amazing man, and he said he's got a job to do and he's gonna do it, which I was highly encouraged by that. Uh, the LA County Sheriff was there. Uh, he came and spoke to me as well. And, uh, it was just really cool to see that kind of turnout to support our quality. So, anyway, um, I think there'll, there'll be some stuff on the National Sheriff's Association, uh, website and, uh, social media page, if you wanna check it out. And, uh, so anyway, I'll, I'll shut up now. I just, I just wanted to, to bring that experience and share that experience with you because it was something that is, uh, once in a lifetime. So, we also had lunch at the National Sheriff's Association Headquarters with several of the families, and that was, that was something, you know, I got to visit with these families and talk to them and hear their stories. And all they wanted to do was talk about their officer, their deputy, well, they were all deputies, uh, at the National Sheriff's about what they're like, how they lived, and, and who they were, and they wanted to glorify them. So that was pretty cool. Anyway.
Awesome.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So just a couple of quick updates. Um, our two new ambulances have arrived. One is in service. It was placed over at Station Six in Happy Valley. And it'll actually be here when y'all are done, down in the parking lot, for you guys to view it and see what it looks like and be able to look inside and ask any questions. The other one's getting radios and stuff installed now, so it should be in service, and it'll actually go to Station Two in Artesia. That ambulance will be moved down to Otis, so that'll give us an ambulance at every station. Um, call statistics, we've been working on gathering some data. Um, Roberta and I got together and some things that we wanted to look at, so. For April, we had two hundred and sixty-two requests for service. Twenty-one of those were for controlled burns. Fifty-eight were with Artesia Fire. A hundred and three were with Carlsbad Fire. And then a hundred and one of those were handled just by our entity, so. We're trying to track it and then see, you know, how many times do our guys get on scene or able to evaluate a patient that maybe doesn't wanna go to the hospital and get a refusal prior to their arrival, so. As we go, I'll get those reports more in depth, and I'll email those out to you monthly and, um, be able to answer those questions. Um, the new positions that y'all had approved, we're working diligently with HR to try to get those filled so that they're ready to go, and we can start backfilling, uh, any vacancies we have. Um, for deputy chief, we had eight applicants, three external, four internal. Um, we had eight for the three lieutenant positions, four external, four internal. And then we had five certified firefighters. Um, four of those five are paramedics, so. We actually have a good pool of applicants coming in, um, and other entities locally, asking for our pay scale and other things of how we're getting these people to wanna come to work for us, so. It's nice to have those problems that everybody else doesn't have, I guess, where people wanna come work for us, so. Um, I, that's all I have. Any questions, comments, concerns? If anything comes up, as always, don't hesitate to call Jared or I.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Thank you, Josh.
Just wanted to mention, if you notice something new, this is our Al camera.
Just wanted to mention, if you notice something new, this is our Al camera. At county manager's request, we are now Facebook live streaming. It'll be the presenter anywhere and by the noise and the sound, it rotates to you if you're speaking. And if you'll look on Facebook after our meeting, it'll be posted and you'll see what it is to the public, so.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. County manager comments. Just like Ms. Carroll said, I wanted to thank I T. and Red Rocket for getting this Al camera set up. It was actually Mayor Henry who kind of suggested it to us. They use it in Artesia and it was a good idea because we've always livestreamed our commission meetings, but it's good to actually put faces to voices now that we are livestreaming. So hopefully the public likes it and likes the upgrade to what we have. Let's see. We did a walk-through. Trent and I went to the fairgrounds a couple of weeks ago. I know you guys just approved the agreement that was in the consent agenda. But I kind of just wanted to talk about what the walk-through entailed. Commissioner Beard also attended that walk-through. And it was actually a really good field trip. It was really eye-opening to see what, what we have out there, what kind of condition the facilities is in, what kind of work needs to be done. Dylan and some of his other team members were out there and they walked us through some of the immediate concerns that we needed to draw our attention to and some of the long-term repairs and maintenance that we need to do. So there was a few emergency things, I call them, that need to be done before. There's a couple of events now in June and then, of course, the fair in July. The electrical panel that was out there really needed attention to some of the lighting and the speakers in the arena. There were some safety concerns as well as the bathrooms. We took a tour of the bathrooms and those also needed some immediate fixes. So Trent and his team got on a lot of those. He's currently working on those for the events that are coming up. And then after the major events for the summer, the county will come up with the plan, a long-term plan to do some major fixes and repairs out there at the fairgrounds. I think Dylan and the other gentlemen that work with him, they have a really good team out there. I think they're gonna do a really good job and we really look forward to working with them and getting that place fixed up to where it should be. So I just wanted to report on that. We sent out a survey for consideration of the logo you guys had approved a couple of meetings ago to explore a new county logo. Red Rocket had assisted us in doing a survey and sending it out to all users. We sent it out. We got about thirty-five responses back and we're compiling that information and we'll send it to a couple of designers to see what kind of designs they come up with for a new logo for you guys' consideration. Just as a quick reminder, after this meeting, we are gonna do a detention center site visit, so don't run off and leave. We're gonna meet at the detention center. It should only take about an hour to do that site visit. And then lastly, I just want to say school's gonna be out this week, so I just want to say happy and safe summer to all the kids out there. So that's all I have.
Wow, what an uneventful meeting. Kind of nice. I'd like to build a little bit on what Trent's done in the walk-through, but there has certainly been some neglect over the years at the county fairgrounds and Forest Council Arena out there and I'm hearing and seeing a lot of support in fixing all of that up. It certainly needs it. It's, it's a pretty big deal, a big rodeo coming in the fairgrounds. There's been a lot of work and a lot of interest and interest generated and it, and a, a lot of volunteer help putting all that together. So I appreciate what you've done and what Trent's done and watching the awards and what's going on around the county and hearing from everybody. We've got a pretty good deal going here in Eddie County with, with our county employees and I think everybody needs to be aware of that and appreciate it. This is a pretty well-run county from top to bottom. Very few problems. Everybody works. Things get done. I mean, you see the complaints go down on the list over a period of time for Jason. I mean, that's kind of stood out to me. So thank you, everybody that supports this county, this county.
I'll make mine real quick. I got a couple of things. Just wanted to address the public comment this morning. Just a couple of clarifications. Because I want to apologize if Mr. Ray heard that. When my comments to access to justice, I think the way I said it was the first time I'd heard about it, it was all about Artesia. The second time I heard about it, it was the walkability to the courthouse from Carlsbad. Well, the first time was in Carlsbad when they were talking about Artesia. The second time was in Artesia when they were talking about Carlsbad. I just thought it was a weird switch, but but my comment to it was, I think we need to understand that better and make sure we're taking that into account before we move forward with any projects, as well as the economic impact and everything else that we included in the motion. The other thing I'd clarify real quick, I, I don't know where it is, but I'm being asked in Artesia why I voted against leaving the courthouse. It was a two to three vote is what somebody said they saw on Facebook. I'm not sure where that information came from, but it's incorrect. It was a five to oh vote to leave the courthouse where it was. Because I don't think we have the information to do anything at the moment, but we're not ready to move it. We're not ready to, we've got a lot more and I think that was included in the motion as to what we would like to see before we're able to move forward. So unfortunately, that information is out there. We've addressed it a few times. But hopefully someone will help correct that because there was not a two to three vote and I want the public to understand that. That was a five to oh vote. And I think that shows that the commission is listening and we're wanting to make sure that we have the best information before we proceed forward. Other thing real quick, want to thank Eddie County Fire. I know we had a grass fire. Why this is interesting, I mean, last night, we, I was up kind of late. There's a really cool app too, if y'all are interested in fires, that I learned last night. There's a forest fire in Cloudcroft. It looks like it's contained, but it was very close to my dad's house and so we were up watching that and that app is pretty neat. So if y'all are interested in, in making sure that you understand evacuations, maybe Josh can, or Jared can help us find some better apps. Because it is that season. It's dry. We need rain. And, and those things are gonna continue to pop up over the summer, so please be careful, please be vigilant. I have no idea how this one started. There was a rumor already of, of what it was, but I think, I think you did a good job last year of reminding us chains can start fires, cigarettes can start fires. There's so many things out there. It is dry. Please pay attention to what you're doing as you're going down that highway, so that we don't have any unintentional fires being started. Some really great news. We talked about it ahead of time. Unfortunately, they weren't state championships, but Artesia was in all of the state championships. They've done a great job. Our baseball team came in second. They played for the state championship. Our softball team played for the state championship. And then both boys and girls track finished third at their state championship. So lots of state champions within that track group, bringing home out of the blue. But I think, I think our teams did a great job. That middle of the month can be super distracting for us in the meeting. So congratulations to Artesia. And with that, I know it was mentioned earlier in the prayer, but graduation is on Thursday in Artesia. Please pray for those kids. You know, I, I attended a back lariat recently and I think the preacher was a hundred percent correct. The world we're sending our children into right now is very, very different than the one that we probably went into when we were their age. And so pray for them. I think this generation, I happen to have a couple in this generation and it feels like maybe they're coming back to, they're tired of misinformation. They're tired of being told things that aren't true. Social media has become very dangerous. We, I know we use it, but I think the kids are grasping that and so I'm glad to see that. But please, this group going out there, it is a different world. And they're all gonna, they're all gonna be faced with that. So keep those graduates in mind. And that's it. It's an exciting time for them. So with that, I think I have anything else. Oh, and to Jason, I really appreciate this and I really, I don't, we need to bring that up again, the complaint tracker. That's fantastic. How many complaints, how, it's not fantastic how many complaints we had, but it's nice to see that the complaints we had have been addressed so quickly and were very responsive. So again, thank y'all, to your team as well. Just lots of great things happening in Eddie County between the S O.'s office and, and the warden and, I mean, I can't say, I'll skip y'all. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to. Everyone out there is doing a fantastic, lots of good stuff happening and we need to keep it up because we've got a lot more to do.
Chris Carlson?
Okay. I echo what, what Commissioner Henry said about getting this from Jason. I think it's a great deal. I mean, but there's two sides to the coin. Now that we're getting this, now that we're getting the roads in a lot better shape, now the complaints I'm getting is about people speeding down those roads, you know? They think it now is a, it's a racetrack and so I've gone from getting roads that they can't get down to getting complaints about people are getting down there too fast. So, you know, we just kind of get in a no-win situation on that. But it's a good problem to have and so I appreciate that. Kind of on an economic note, contacts in the V L M. was telling us that where we thought that the oil field was busy, it's about to go into turbo drive because of all the permits and drilling permits that they're getting and approving. So that's a good thing for us economically in the county. That, that that income's gonna be flowing in and stuff, so I think that's great. However, there's drawbacks to that. I also heard where now the hotel rates are going up and so they're, they're back so that's gonna affect other aspects of our economy like the, the tourist trade and stuff, but, but you know what? That's, that's kind of a good problem to have, you know? Then, and lastly, and then I'll shut up, is as we saw the Artesia group making it to the state finals and stuff. I also would like to highlight that the loving softball team was the state champions. So if you ever get a chance to congratulate those girls that were on that state championship softball team. Thank you.
All right. Last Wednesday, I attended the local law enforcement memorial that was held outside of the city hall building. It's always humbling to, to be at places like that and see the, the amount of support that was there for law enforcement on a Wednesday morning. Nine o'clock on a Wednesday morning, streets were packed. It was, it was cool to see. So I, I'm glad that we do those things. Later in the afternoon, Mubert Oil Company had come to Carlsbad to meet with county and city officials just to kind of introduce themselves, explain who they are, what they plan on doing, how they are contributing back to the city and the county. It was nice to see the number one driller in Eddie County make an effort to come down here and introduce himself and make face-to-face contact with us. I thought that was special to have the C E O. from that company down here. So, so we have that now from, we have the C E Os and, and highly ranked officials from Mubert Chevron, Devon, everybody coming down to Eddie County. I think that shows the the level of importance that we have here. As Ernie mentioned, V L M. permits are at an all-time high, so it just shows how invested these major companies are to our community and that's something good for our future. Schools out. Please, as more kids are on the road, be careful of them. Everybody enjoy your summers. And lastly, early voting's still going on, guys. Get out and vote. There's a couple of important elections right now, so get out and cast your vote. Let your complaints and your voice be heard. You have from now until June fourth, with the exception of the day before election day, correct?
Right, Sundays.
No Sundays and the day before election.
And then the, this coming Monday will be closed, but so June first is the last day of early voting.
There you go.
So election day is the fourth.
With that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have executive session today, so I do need a motion for the board to go into executive session in accordance with State and New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section ten fifteen one H two, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, contract personnel.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
And we will be going up to the third floor for executive session and say ten, fifteen minutes? Is what we'll need?